Calling me in order and, uh, yes. Yes, wait, one moment. It wouldn't, it doesn't matter. That doesn't matter for me. You're gonna get called, you'd be lucky if you're not called by your dog's name with my family trait, not your, uh...
What is your dog's name?
We call each other...
Bo.
Not out of disrespect either.
Hey, you.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Ashambo.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Hanson is not here yet.
All right, thank you. I am too. Presentation, discussion of the town Fountain Hills' proposed 2010-11 budget.
Honorable mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this work study is a review of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2010, The first thing I'd like to talk about is the process that the budget goes through. We have an outcome-based budget, which means we start with a review of the strategic plan, which leads to a review of the council goals for next year. The review of the council goals leads to a prioritization of programs based on how closely they meet council's goals, and then finally, the allocation of available resources. The strategic plan, as you know, was updated recently from the 2005 version by the volunteer members of the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. Based on citizen feedback to date, the priorities are education, learning, and culture, environmental stewardship, civility, civic responsibility, economic vitality, maintain and improve community infrastructure, public health, safety, and welfare, and recreational opportunities and From those strategic planning ideals, the council goals were formed. These are specified in much greater detail in the budget document between pages 82 to 85, but I tried to pick some highlights from each of the categories. Those would be the development of educational partnerships with the school district, Fort McDowell, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars to promote programs in town, to promote wash maintenance and stormwater education, to promote programs that support neighborliness, to develop programs that promote community pride, to continue to promote the downtown vision plan, and to pursue a fiscal plan to get us back on track with pavement management projects, to continue to promote programs to create a safe and healthy town, and to develop an urban trail system master plan. Some of the major issues that affected the fiscal year 2010-11 budget was, in general, the national and Arizona economic recession, steeply declining general fund revenues, lack of a diversified revenue base, state shared revenues that are potentially at risk, and a changing environment for town services, particularly demand for buildings-related services that are declining, and the proportion of public safety as a share of general fund As you can see, from fiscal year '05-'06 through next fiscal year, a dramatic decline in general fund revenues. The second item is a lack of diversification of our revenue base. Two revenue sources in next year's budget represent 48 percent, 88 percent of our total general fund revenues. Local sales tax is 48 percent of that, and then state shared revenues approximately 40 percent. And because of the economic situation at the state level, there may be a great risk that if the sales tax item on the ballot doesn't pass, that state shared revenues to the town of Fountain Hills may be at risk. I don't know if you can see this chart very well, but this is in the budget document, and it shows from the general fund where the money comes from. And as you can easily see, there are two nice big chunks which represent local sales tax and state shared revenues, and the proportion that's left comes from things like franchise fees, charges for services, licenses, and permits, and court fines, and forfeitures. Building-related revenues in the past were a significant revenue source to the general fund. As you can see, they've fallen off from 2.1 million in 2004, 2005, to $200,000 estimated for fiscal year 2010-11. At the same time, the share of public safety expenditures as a percent of the general fund budget are growing. Because those departments really are limited in how much they can be cut, you'll note that public safety now represents 47.2 percent of general fund expenditures, wherein the 2006, 2007 budget, they were 30 percent of general fund expenditures. Again, this chart shows where the money goes by fund, by departmental categories. The process of balancing the budget. Town policy requires that when town brings forth a proposed budget, it's a balanced budget. What the executive budget committee did is, number one, to seek input from the various components in the community. We had an open house to seek resident input on the budget. We met with the various boards and commissions. We had meetings with the directors of each department, and we had meetings with town After those meetings, the executive budget committee had to come up with what we were gonna do to balance this budget. Some of the things that you're looking at are what is being proposed to bring forth a balanced budget. Those are reorganization of town departments. The community services department is a combined department which represents the old park and recreation department and the community center department, and the development services department is the old public works department and the planning and zoning department. In addition to that, we've had reductions in staff from 81 full-time equivalent to 61 full-time equivalent. We've had reductions in service levels in many areas. We've had a reduction in the amount of the construction sales tax that will be transferred from the general fund to the CIP. We're updating the comprehensive fee schedule to add some fees and to make some adjustments to fees, and we've reduced subsidies to programs in the recreation and senior divisions. These are just the organizational charts which you saw not too long ago that are the new departments that are being proposed. This is a graph that shows you what has occurred since 2002, 2003, to the number of town employees. Back then, we had a staffing of 115 full-time equivalents. Next year's staffing is proposed to be 61. Of the positions that were eliminated, I'll go through and talk about those areas that did have positions eliminated. Public information was a loss of 1.5 FTE, which is 100 percent of the department. Economic development was reduced by 1 half FTE, which is 50 percent of the department. The streets division had a loss of 2.5 FTE, which is 23 percent. Engineering lost three people for 50 percent of the department. Facilities maintenance, 1 FTE, which represents 29 percent. In planning, 1 FTE, which is 25 percent. In building safety, 3 FTE, which is 50 percent. Code enforcement, 1 FTE, which is 50. Mapping and graphics, again, 1 individual, which represents 50 percent. In recreation, 4.7 FTE, which is 41 percent of the recreation department staffing. Community center operations lost 0.5 FTE, which is less than 1 percent, and the senior activity center lost 0.3 FTE, which represents less than 1 percent. Comprehensive fee schedule, which is attached to the budget document and is normally adopted with the budget, includes a few proposed new fees. For the benefit of the council, all the new fees in the fee schedule are highlighted so that they should stand out, so that it makes it very easy to see what the changes that we're recommending are. They include annual alcohol permits, fees for repetitive false alarms, new fire safety inspection fees, and temporary vendor permits. We are also proposing to revise the fees for adult-oriented businesses and encroachment We're also proposing this year to reduce subsidies in some program areas. In the park and rec area, we're hoping to reduce the overall subsidy from 63.2 percent to 41.7 percent. What this actually means is that we're asking to raise the program fees so that the subsidy that the town has for the expenditure side of the budget is reduced slightly. The total subsidy for park and rec programs for next year after the changes to fees is estimated to be $106,905. In the senior programs area, we're hoping to reduce the overall subsidy from 52.4 percent to 43.9 percent. I've listed the various categories where the fees have been increased. What you're seeing is the new fee level, so membership would now be $25 annually, but it would still leave with the town subsidizing the program at the rate of $51,843. In the home-delivered meals category, we're proposing to increase the fee per meal to $8.50. That program would still have a subsidy of $18,664. Total subsidies for next fiscal year for senior programs would remain at $84,222. Some of the other service-level changes that are incorporated into the budget is a return of the fountain to its full runtime, the continuation of community service contracts in the general fund, elimination of the public information division staffing, postponement of all major capital expenditures, deferral of preventive maintenance, provision of custodial services in public areas only, the reduction of park and median landscape maintenance, and the elimination of certain town programs, such as concerts in the park, the avenues newsletter, Oktoberfest, our current parking lot recycling program, and the shredding Now I'd like to take you through quickly the different divisions and the impact of budget changes from '09 and '10-11. Agile notes from mayor and council budget has been reduced by 15.4 percent. The municipal court's budget has actually increased by 6 percent, but the court is bringing in a grant of $40,000 to assist in subsidizing that increase. The town manager's budget is down by 12.5 percent. Town clerk, down by 30.4. Human resources risk management, down 16.0. Finance and customer service, down 7 and 1/2. Information technology, down 36.2. Public information, down 93.3. The only thing remaining in that division are things like dues that the town would normally pay anyway. Economic development is down by 51 percent. Legal services, down by 13 percent. Engineering, down by 50.1. Facilities maintenance, down 14.9. Planning, down 32.3. Building safety, down 38.1. Code enforcement, down 41.1. Mapping and graphics, down 43.4. Recreation, down 22.1. Community center operations, down 15.4. Senior services, down 14 percent. Fountain park operations is just about a wash with the addition of the runtime of the fountain being brought back. Golden Eagle Park is down 15.7. Desert Vista Park, .1. Four Peaks Park, 10.2. Law enforcement, up, down 3, and fire and emergency medical, up 2. That's a very quick overview of the general fund. Now I'd like to walk you through some of the other funds that both have operating and capital components. This is a graph showing the different funds in the town, and as you can note, the two primary funds are the general fund and the capital projects fund, which encompass 66 percent of the town's expenditures. The first fund I'd like to speak about is the HERF or the Streets Fund, our Fund 200. The HERF fund is going to suffer from the loss of LTAS funding next year. This year, that was about $114,000. In order to save funds in the general fund, we've transferred the traffic management program and the balance of the median maintenance program from the general fund to the HERF fund. We've reduced the median landscape maintenance contracts, reduced town support for outside events, for example, the great fair, and eliminated the transfer of HERF monies to the CIP for pavement management. Here again, I'd like to walk you quickly through the changes in the streets department budget. Streets administration is down 55.9 percent. Adopt a street, 1.6. Vehicle maintenance, 37.7. Traffic signals, 13.2. Street sweeping, 10.3. Street signs, 12.6, and pavement management, 77 percent. You're not gonna see percentages near median maintenance and traffic management because last year there were no budgeted expenses in the street fund for these items. They were incorporated into the general fund engineering category. The excise tax fund, also known as the economic development fund, provides ongoing funding for economic development and downtown development. It also provides for the repayment of the civic center and mountain bonds. In 2010-11, one of the things that you're gonna notice which is new is that there's a transfer from the excise tax fund to provide startup funding for the community service contracts in the general fund. And here again, the downtown development budget. It's one of the few budgets that's going up next year, and it's going up 52.7 percent. The bulk of that, $340,000, is a transfer from the excise tax fund to the CIP for downtown green projects and downtown vision projects. Our special revenue fund 400 is normally called the grants fund. Monies come into that fund that have specific requirements about how they are spent. Examples of that would be AAR, ARRA stimulus funding, MAG grants, any other type of grant that the town receives. It also receives one-time grants for things like next year, we're gonna be doing an energy audit. We also have a grant for special transportation services, which is a one-year grant. And as I mentioned earlier, the municipal court has a $40,000 grant to support orders of protection. The debt service funds provide for the collection of revenues and the repayment of various types of bonds. The bonds that they serve to pay are voter-approved general obligation bonds. Typically, they would approve revenue or HERF bonds, but those bonds were retired this year. The Eagle Mountain Community Facility District bonds, and the municipal property court bonds for the town center and the preserve. The capital projects fund is the fund in which all of the projects valued at $50,000 or more are conducted. This is a layout that should match your detail in the capital projects budget by category of project. We're doing $570,000 worth of downtown development projects next year. $10,7,493 in street or sidewalk projects. $148,800 in continuing traffic signal upgrade projects. $90,000 in general government, and $2,292,951 in public safety. That relates to the fire station relocation project. And then there's a built-in contingency of $133,592. There's a sheet which I don't know if the public can see, but it shows the various sources of funding for the capital projects. One of the large issues that will show up when you look at the funding for capital projects next year is no long-term plan for funding of pavement management projects throughout town. Pavement management each year competes for funding with all the other capital projects that are brought forward and proposed to the executive budget committee. The result of that has been the delay in road maintenance throughout town. In the past couple of years, what we've tried to do is break up pavement management zones into two or three zones rather than do them a zone at a time because we haven't had the funding to do it. If you look at this horrible graph, the blue line represents the pavement management projects that we're hoping to do through fiscal year 2020. The red line indicates how much money is available to do that, and as you can see, the gap is quite significant. One of the other things that I thought I might bring up at this discussion is because we have the large issue of state shared revenues as something to contend with this year, and we are unlikely to know what the result of that is gonna be until after the November election, it might be necessary for the first time to use rainy day funds if significant amounts of money in state shared revenues are taken away from the town. Questions had come up, how does that work? The rainy day fund was created two years ago now. It has $1.3 million in the fund. It's appropriated when you appropriate the budget, because what you're appropriating is the assumption that state shared revenues will come in. So if the state shared revenues don't come in, the rainy day funds may be used in lieu, but it would still be part of the appropriation that we would make with this budget. We'd have to come back to council at that time if we choose to use rainy day funds to cover that budget gap that would be created. But as you'll note, it takes a 2/3 affirmative vote of the council to authorize use of those funds. So if we got into a position next year where that was deemed necessary, staff would come back to council and ask for permission to use those funds. Fund balances, this is just a very quick picture of what we're estimating fund balances to be at the end of this fiscal year. Strategies for the future. One of the things that both the strategic plan and staff believe strongly in is the need for the development of a long-range financial plan. That plan should include things like revenue diversification, revenue enhancement, a comprehensive user fee analysis, a review of town-wide subsidy policies. We don't have a formal policy for subsidies. What we'd like to do is come back to you through the course of next fiscal year with information on subsidy policy and potentially have one established by council. The strategies also include expanded pursuit and use of grants, review of all of the town's provided programs and services, and a review of the service levels we currently provide. The remaining budget schedule is following this work study this evening. There is an item on the council agenda next Thursday which would allow the public to speak to the budget issue. We will have a council meeting on June 3 where the maximum expenditure limitation is set. That budget will then be published two consecutive weeks. Then there'll be a council meeting on June 17 at which potentially the council could adopt the final budget. Following that, one more item would have to be done, and that would be adopting the tax levy, and that would either be done if there's a July 1 meeting or probably one of the first meetings in August. Questions?
Good, thank you very much, Mary. And let me just remind everyone, there is a public open house following the town council's work study immediately following, and it's right here in this room. Mary or Julie, what process do you suggest we go through to effectively address the budget here initially? Questions, just from council?
I'm willing to address just council questions in whatever order.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Leger.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, question for you. Under your capital funds, I noticed that it included the Melvin overlay of Sora Boulevard. It's my understanding we're not gonna be going in that direction, so will that expenditure be reduced by 4.5 million?
Currently, it's listed as a bonding of 4.5 million. Whatever is not approved in the budget process will be removed with an explosion.
From the capital expenditure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you. On page 41, you have the operating fund balance policy, which is the designated unreserved, the reserved in the rainy day fund. My question is kind of due to the fact that our budget is so much less than it's been, that I see the restrictions and the use of these funds, but since there's been such a dramatic change, those numbers are fairly high when you're looking at what they're supposed to do, which is the 10 percent of the five years, the 20 percent of the five years, and on the rainy day fund, it's kind of on its own because it's sort of a different animal. But when we have a definition of what these three funds are supposed to do, it says they're supposed to add up or reach the 30 percent goal. So I guess I'm not trying to say we ought to go crazy on this. I'm asking, what tools do we have? Because actually... Because actually, the first two add up to the 30%. The rainy day fund then is in addition to that. But the actual 30% is a very inflated number right now when you look at what our budget is. So I understand that they're set up in order to get us through six months or a budget year. And I don't know what or if there is a mechanism to look at these amounts. It's about 6.1 million. And I don't want to, you know, I don't have to go through all this right now. But we've been through the numbers, and it is quite a bit more than if we said, okay, our budget's been between, it's going to be, you know, between 12 and 13 million or something like that over the next several years. So since we've made all these changes, we have so many less people working here, we have a lot of changes. What is available to us, if not now, since we may not need to look at this now, but in the future, that would make, you know, what if our budget goes down again next year? And then this becomes quite a lot of money, $6.1 million, to have it be untouchable when by our own policy, it's way more than 30%?
Currently, we have 5.5 million estimated to be the general fund balance, which is basically just meeting the minimum requirements of that 10% and 20%. That's calculated.
Oh, isn't it 6.1?
5.5 is the estimated fund balance we're expecting at this year-end.
So what's the page 41? Those three amounts together?
Those two amounts, the rainy day fund is actually in a separate fund. The general fund contains the 10% and the 20% portion. Because of the way the financial policy is written, it's written saying that it's the estimate over the past five years. So this, the dollar amount will continue to decline as revenues and expenditures continue to decline. If you wanted to reduce them beyond this, it would take a rewrite of the financial policy.
Okay, let me think about it because, you know, I've already been through this a little bit. And I guess I'm not, I'm coming out with more than the 30%.
Mayor, some members, maybe I can explain a little bit. The fund balance policy is designed as a minimum. And the fund balance, there's the three different components, the undesignedated and the designated. It's based on the policy, and again, these are designed, they're standards that are most governments ascribe to and that you, that we've adopted as a policy. The fund balance as a minimum, which means we established that amount, and that was the amount that when we created the fund balance, it then became 6 point, whatever million dollars it was. That was the amount at the time, based on the previous five years. The revenues over the last five years have gone down. But there's nothing in the policy that says then you will reduce your fund balance. What it does say in the policy is that if you had any surplus over and above what is required by policy, that you can only use it for specific things that are non-recurring. You could use it to pay debt. You could use it for capital expense. But you couldn't use it to supplement an operating budget or anything like that. So basically, what that 20%, or 30% is, that's the minimum. If we have more than that, that is, that is a good thing as far as keeping our credit rating up. If we, the rainy day fund can be used for, you know, if we had to use it if we had a severe drop in revenue, if we appropriate the budget and we can't, that's what the designation of rainy day fund is. That has a little bit more flexibility as far as being able to supplement the general fund. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. And Mayor, then, let's say the contracts, since if we are, one of your recommendations was to look for maybe changing our policy on how we're doing these, I forgot what you called them now, but they were, you know, coming up with a policy to reexamine how we're doing these. So if we looked at the community contracts, could we potentially look at them as a one-time deal since we have intentions of changing how we fund those after this year?
Mayor, members of council, staff would not recommend that because the community contracts are actually an operating expense. Whether we're going to do them just one year or three years or five years, it is an operating expense. It's not a one-time, unexpected, unanticipated charge. So we have the community contracts in the budget. You know, we made those adjustments, we did the reorganization. And so now the community contracts are in the general fund budget, you know, based on what the committee recommended. So we're okay with that. We don't need to find an additional funding source.
Thanks.
More questions for staff and anything related to the comprehensive budget before us? Councilmember Legere?
Thank you, Mayor. Julie, are you looking for any recommendations or suggestions at this point in time in terms of some of what's been presented this evening? Most of which I'm comfortable with. We've gone through several iterations in the last several months. Is this the time and place?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a work study session. We're prepared for any feedback from the council. We realize that this is a working document, and changes are likely to be made. So we're open to any communication at all.
What I'd like to propose with respect to senior services, I'd like to suggest that we go back to the drawing board and look at capping their membership fee at $15. And I'd like us to go back to the drawing board and look at capping their Meals on Wheels at a maximum of $7. Those are recommendations, suggestions at this time, items that I will be proposing in our final budget if changes don't occur between now and then. So I just want to put that on the table. I'm not sure if anyone, Allison Council wants to weigh in on this. I noticed that in wash management, it was my understanding we were going to forego wash management. I saw that there was $62,000 in there, which from my perspective may give us some wiggle room. And if it's not there, perhaps we can find it elsewhere. Thank you.
Councilmember Legere, the fire chief and the public works director had taken a look at the washes because of the extreme rainy conditions we've had this year. And the feeling was it would be dangerous to the community to not do a full wash maintenance program this year. So it was reincorporated in the budget.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. And I was just using that as an example of going back to the budget and looking for places. So that's it for now, Mayor, thank you.
All right, and just to clarify, the work studies for us, for discussion, no action. But all ideas, it's our brainstorming time to come forward with ideas. And we need a lot of brainstorming and dialogue to come up with the best budget we can here. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. About that, the, on page 23, when we talk about the subsidies that are going to be going to, say, the membership, it says it now becomes 51.8. And then for the home-delivered meals, if we make those changes. I was wondering if you had any way of telling us what the amounts were? Like basically, if we do what Councilman Legere said, what are we looking at trying to make up for? So say we go to $15, what, you know, what's that delta? And then the other thing was definitely with the Meals on Wheels, the $7, I think, was what they suggested they could bear. And if we do go ahead with maybe making one of those changes, or if we keep the membership at 25, is there, has there been any thought of scholarships, if that's the right word, for people to apply for who couldn't afford the $25? Or if that's something that would be out of line? But I'd really like to know what we're talking about. Is it like $30,000? I was kind of playing around a little bit to see what we're actually would miss if we went to the 15 and the 7. You don't have to do it now.
If I could interject something that we've been benefiting from and struggling now with is because we have a new accounting program that, and many of these questions are coming before us now that are not going to be easy because we now understand the cost of these, of all of our programs. Not just the hard costs, but soft costs now are, all costs are now calculated and rolled up into each and every program. Or each and every expenditure is now broken down by resource. So we now realize that home-delivered meals is subsidized. And in the past, council members have spoken out during budget times and stated that that's something we weren't going to do. I think that was part of the dialogue in Executive Budget Committee, was that we could not assume that council wanted to subsidize this program or others that might be considered a social service because our town generally doesn't do social service programs. So that's why you're seeing what you see here. There's a method to where the numbers came from because the numbers and the feedback we received through, up until this point, were that the subsidy from area agency on the aging was not going to go up, even though our cost, we were able to delineate our cost was not going to go up enough to cover the cost for folks that qualify for area agency on the aging, where those folks were largely covered by that, in essence, grant from an outside agency. I'm not sure how much you want to get into how we actually came up with that amount. But generally, we're looking for those that were buying the meals outside of area agency to pick up some of the balance for those so that the other meals could continue to go out to those that could not afford them, generally. That's why that's, but it's a considerable jump. But it is, it all goes back to understanding what the real cost is now. So it's not, no one's getting picked on as we go through this budget. You'll see that the subsidy question will come up quite a bit because now we actually understand what that is. Mayor, Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. And those really are tough questions. But I think as we go through this and we look at the different things that we're calling, you know, we're identifying as subsidy, we need to factor in the group's ability to pay as well. And somehow, we've got to keep that out there. Because, you know, you look at the difference with sports activities. They're very important. And, but that's different than meals to people that can't afford them or need them delivered. Somehow, if we can just factor that in.
It's just, I think, more traditional, probably not the right word, is that communities such as ours, parks and recreation programs, youth services, senior services, are always subsidized. That's just what a town provides. Providing meals is not typically something a town of our size would typically do. It's something the senior services did a good job of, and we've continued to do a good job of, and I'm sure will continue to do a good job of. It's now getting around, getting around the subsidy. Is that something that our community is going to do? It looks like it's going to be necessary to some extent because the program we know is highly valued. Most of us here have been involved in one form or another on that program, to speak of just that home-delivered meals program. So I just wanted to lay the groundwork because, you know, going into a social services programs is something that clearly we're not going to be able to go into in the near future because our revenues are down considerably. And is that really the role of government, in essence? Councilmember Dickey?
And Mayor, then, on page 43, when we look at that as a townwide subsidy policy development, strategies for the future, along with the community contracts, I guess we're all trying to, you know, get through this year. And if we are seriously going to do something like that, then maybe, again, I know we try to avoid anything that shocks people into saying, well, July 1, boom, this gets done. This, again, this is almost like the transportation thing where if we can give them notice, and here it is, we're starting right away, we're going to be doing a reexamining how we do these subsidies and these contracts and things like that. Because things are, like that one that showed us, are not looking too good there. But again, to get through this year, and they are willing to go up some. So they didn't say, no way, we can't do any. So I hope that there's some compromise in there with the full knowledge, though, that we're working on some pretty drastic changes probably for the year after this.
And again, I'm using this one as an example, and that's because it's on top of a lot of folks' mind. But this is a parameter I'm trying to lay out for everyone to consider each and everything coming before us, what Councilmember Legere might be, and to be in the right answer. You know, I'm certainly open to that.
I understand, I'm not, I understand exactly.
Councilmember Legere?
And along the lines of that argument, I think that there is a fine line between what is social service and what is not social service. I think it's a matter of your philosophy. One of the ways I look at the membership and senior services, I have a commission that's providing us all feedback saying that our membership might take a big hit. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but I trust their judgment because they're in tune with what's happening down there. So my thinking is I'm actually looking at this more from a business perspective than a social service perspective to say that the more folks we have enrolled in the community center, membership, and the more people we have involved in our Meals on Wheels program, the more capital we have in volunteerism. And we know that all the people that volunteer in those programs also volunteer in other places. And we know that a number of our members that join the community, excuse me, senior services, also volunteer. And I think if you were to run those numbers, you would say that we're making an investment. And there's a return on investment in moving in this direction. So that's how I look at it outside of the realm of social services. And also to the points that have been made, if we are moving in that direction for non-subsidy, I think it should be an iterative process. I mean, if we're moving in that direction, we need to give Senior Services, Inc. heads up on that a year, two years, so they can be engaged in restructuring how they operate in terms of looking at grant funding, so forth and so on. So I'm not opposed to moving in that direction. But I think these numbers are a little extreme, and, you know, we've received that feedback from our commission. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Well, and going forward, too, we know that's a very active commission. And they've been brainstorming with a number of ideas and, you know, like adopting seniors and that type of thing. So any help that we can provide through our volunteer organization to starting up some new programs to assist in that manner, I think, would be very helpful.
As generally, I think for our town to be as healthy as we can, we certainly need to make the right investments with our limited resources. But also, we want to limit the delivery of services by government so that we can have citizens delivering services to citizens, which tends to be the best delivery method out there. But yeah, I mean, this is the first year we really had to engage the commissions for budgetary impact, other than fee studies we typically will go through. But actually, to help us with this because it's been so considerable of a reduction in revenues. And of course, now we're not looking at reducing programs that are nice to have or reducing programs that most people would consider as needs. So the commissions have been very helpful with that. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. In the budget, on page 28, talking about capital projects fund, Fund 600. When we talk about other ones like development fees, they, the first thing it says is these are restricted funds. Fund 400, restricted fund, 420 court enhancement, restricted fund. But capital projects fund, Fund 600, does not say that. So does that mean that the council could use the Fund 600 for items other than capital projects?
Mayor, members of the council, the capital projects fund is a restricted fund by town council resolution. The town council certainly could unrestrict it, meaning that the revenue source for the capital projects fund is a portion of local sales tax. That is the only revenue that that capital projects fund gets. But again, that was created by the council by resolution to transfer that money. And so the council could undo that, and, but then there would be no funding for the capital projects. But yes, that is a council restriction, not a state-mandated restriction. Some of them are mandated either by the grant or by the government, but this is a local restriction.
Okay, and then along those same lines, we, on your presentation, you mentioned changing the transfer to the capital projects fund from 85% to 50, did we say 50%? But in the budget, I think it still says 85%. So I'm not sure if that had to be changed in this page 28 thing or not. But if we, if we're, you know, I don't know, because there's a lot of different things now. We're getting used to these new budgets. I don't know if this page has to have that or not, but...
Mayor, council, what's in the budget right now is our adopted policies, our adopted financial policies. We would bring back to the council a proposal to reduce the construction sales tax as the council has asked us to do. And at that time, we will be amending our financial policies, and the new financial policies will go in the d-. policies will go in the document. So these are the ones that exist right now, but the budget did take that into account and took, transferred the money from the capital projects fund to the general fund.
The budget did that all by itself.
The budget did it all by itself. But we understand that that actually has to be approved by the council separate from the budget and will bring that resolution forward.
Thank you.
All right, now we're into the funds. I think it's great how staff broke out the funds and you addressed them in the PowerPoint and Mary did and helping us understand a little bit where the monies come from, where they can be, where they can be used, where they can't be used. But if we could address those a little bit more, on our budget, it's page 270. The high, the first one on that page is Fund 200. This is pretty straightforward, the HERF funds. If you could give us, again, a higher level background for where the HERF fund revenues come from and where they can be used, that'd be helpful.
Mayor, members of the council, I was basically saying the HERF fund, we also call the streets fund because HERF funds are a kind, a distribution by the state of things that are used for streets, road purposes, transportation purposes, things of that sort.
And the money comes from where?
From the state.
From the state. And has that item been affected over the last few years, HERF funds?
I mean, most of it is gasoline tax, so as that source of revenue has declined over the last few years, the HERF monies have declined.
And that accounts for roughly 1.3 million this coming year in revenue?
That is correct.
All right. And those go to streets. And the Fund 300, that's one you mentioned, the presentation that had some greening dollars potentially going or coming from it. But you mentioned that it funds repayment at Civic Center and Mountain Bonds. So one, where does this money come from and where are we authorized to spend it?
The excess tax is a percentage of the sales tax that is coming into the town that is specifically set aside. A portion of it is specifically set aside for debt service repayment and a portion of it is set aside for downtown development.
That's the 1/10th, 1% is the economic development downtown fund. And so it's the 0.3 that goes towards the Civic Center and Mountain Bonds?
That's the debt service repayment.
So the 1.1% that's remaining, what is that allowed to be spent upon?
Under broad terms, economic development.
Okay. And the 340,000, that was, I believe that was brought up either in the presentation or in the budget here, was it 320? Actually, can we look at that fund, the expenditures this year coming from that? I'm not sure what paves those on. No, those are on the same page.
Are you talking about the transfer to the capital improvement program on the excess tax fund?
Page 106. Thank you. The 106, the $320,000 figure, can you explain what that is?
The 320 is a transfer to the capital improvement fund for two specific projects. One is the downtown vision plan phase two Avenue Lakeside. Part of that is for the potential use of incentives for development on that piece of property next door. The second component is a downtown vision plan phase three and a use for a downtown parking study that might also assist in the development of the property next door.
And the quote unquote incentive has been typically looked at as the improvement of the sidewalk?
It might include the town participating in some component of improvements either to the sidewalks or to the property.
All right. Let's go back to those special funds. Fund 410, the public art fund, obviously a smaller one of our funds. These are funds that come in from construction, commercial construction. A percentage of the project's costs can come in to the town for us to purchase art. Is that correct?
That is correct. In lieu of providing public art, the developer can choose to do an annual contribution to the public art fund.
Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Oshamo.
And Mary, to further the discussion on that particular fund, there's a transferring of three, or $10,350 and that is for the maintenance of the art pieces that we currently have.
That is correct. The public art fund is restricted to the purchase and installation of public art, but not to the maintenance of the art. So the general fund transfers monies into the public art fund to pay for maintenance.
Okay, that is my, the question I was going to ask is where's the transferring coming from and that's the general fund?
General fund.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Fund 400, special revenue fund. Could you mind explaining what Fund 400 is? I think it's a culmination of a lot of good monies coming into the town.
The special revenue fund is basically a holding fund for grant monies made to the town. So because most grant monies have highly restricted accounting requirements, all of those funds are deposited into Fund 100 and accounted for separately from other town funds because the uses of those funds are restricted to the terms of whatever grant has provided the funds.
And this is probably why our capital improvement budget is so high in its expenditures because it's largely grant monies flowing through the town?
In the last two years, we've had a significant increase in the size of the capital improvement budget because of grant funding.
And can you give me a ballpark of what our net capital improvement spending will be outside of grant monies? Like from our savings, from our capital improvement fund?
The total amount that'll come out of the capital, the capital projects fund is 2,291,000. And of that, 133,000 is the contingency fund.
Okay. What would that leave us the balance of roughly, given we do?
I think at this point, we're seeing the balance would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 8 million.
And then the court enhancement fund for our municipal court?
The court enhancement fund is a set aside of court fines and forfeitures for primarily technology improvements in the court system. For more details than that, I'd probably ask for the help of Judge Andrester.
That's all right. Maybe later. Okay, Judge, your ear. That'd be excellent. I was hoping. I was hoping.
Good evening, Judge, council. The court enhancement fund was created by resolution many years ago and it establishes a $10 assessment per charge, as is the case in other courts around the state, for purposes of addressing court needs that maybe otherwise can't be handled by a town budget. And historically, the court, not just since my appointment in 2002, but prior to that, my predecessor was very prudent in recognizing the value of having those funds available for court needs during difficult times. And we've used them for those reasons that Ms. Martin mentioned. For example, historically, we use them to purchase the digital recording system for the court when we moved into the new building. Prior to that, we had a micro cassette recorder and the preferred appeal record for any case from a limited jurisdiction court was a digital recording. And so we had the ability to purchase that without using town funds. We also recognized the responsibility to the court, court users of having appropriate and proper security. And we purchased a court security camera system that has served us very well. And we also had the opportunity to purchase the supporting hardware for the video conferencing that we use and having the ability to address post-disposition cases for individuals who are incarcerated without having to transport them out to Fountain Hills as we did historically. We've had that for about five years. So the opportunities to use the funds, I think, have been put to good use and we're fortunate that we have those funds available.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Judge? Councilmember Dickey.
I do, Mayor. Judge, it's not about the fund itself, it's just about a question in general because over the last maybe several months, there's been some question about, is there a difference if somebody gets a fee or a fine if it's based on a state ordinance, a state statute or a city or town ordinance? Basically, if you get a ticket that's $50, what does the town get? Is the town pushing one thing over the other in order to be a revenue generator? My understanding is, and we talked about this before, I believe, is that it doesn't matter what it is, that it's 40% that would, that would come in. And I'd just like that clarified because there's just been a lot of activity about speeding and parking tickets and things like that.
I recall that question came up at one of the other budget meetings and I think Ms. Getty responded accurately that that's a, that's a pretty close approximation of what the town gets. And it's also correct that there is no distinction. The mandatory surcharges and fees that the court has to add to any fine that's imposed as a result of the legislature's decision to go to a variety of funds that don't benefit the town of Fountain Hills totals 84% right now. The court has a total of close to 84% of additional surcharges and fees that have to be added to every fine that go to a variety of sources. And I think as I mentioned to the mayor earlier today in the report that I indicated to the council in an email here a little over a month ago, I'll speak to that in a little more detail in the written report to you. Be happy to maybe clarify some of those questions you might have.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, question about page 24, service level changes issues. Are those already decisions that are made as far as eliminating concerts in the park, Oktoberfest and that kind of thing? Or are these things that we're talking about? Obviously, I haven't looked at everything in the book yet.
Councilmember Dickey, these are the items that have been eliminated from the budget. So they're not decisions that have been made as much as they are assumptions that have been made in order to get the budget to balance.
Thank you.
Good. And to speak to that, I think the one paragraph you had, if you wouldn't mind trying to get that back on the screen, page 12, if you can. Yeah. Oh, it may not be the best one. There we go. Page eight, actually, similar.
Which page?
Page eight of the PowerPoint.
What page?
Of the actual presentation, I'm sorry. It might be different than what you have there. It is the decline in general fund revenue. A little bit higher. There you go. This is just, I think, I've been trying, wherever I've been invited to speak, I've been trying to illustrate just what we're dealing with here on a whole, as a town, why everything is being reduced pretty significantly, including staffing as well. Is the, you know, just going back to fiscal year '06, '07, our budget was roughly at $17 million. And this year it shows 12.7. If it's 12.9 or if it's 12.2, it's going to be obviously a considerable decline. And another graph later showed that our public safety, fortunately, costs have not really gone up over that period of time, but they have stayed what they've been, which is roughly around $6 million. So the remainder is what, is how we pay for everything else in town hall, including staff and programs, seniors, youth, streets, everything else that the town is one required to do and/or we feel the community would like it to do. So from '06, '07, not that much different from '07, '08, around $17 million in total general fund revenue, which is our operating revenue fund, to the 12, 12 and a half million or so. In '07, '08, at roughly $17 million, $6 million was public safety, leaving a remainder of roughly $10 million there. $11 million actually in that year. And then that same $6 million against this year's budget will leave us a little over $6 million. So we're going over a short number of years from $11 million to fund town operations to $6 million. So I'm not sure what percentage that is, but it's got to be about 40% reduction. And I think town staff has done a tremendous job even just this year, which was another considerable reduction in maintaining services and the quality of our town. And they're to be commended as well as all the volunteers that have stepped up to help in the, in light of the need. But this is the challenge before us and the staff's been good, done a good job in making sure we understood what was coming. But this is also, again, why we're not going to be funding some things that you or your neighbor might consider as needs or that's crazy not to fund. The money's just not there, obviously. So I wanted to illustrate that. I'm not sure who had their hand up first.
She did.
Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, just on that note though, public safety, just to give, you know, the full story, the contract last year for fire went down a couple hundred thousand and then they agreed to limit how, even less than we thought, how much it would go up. And then the MCSO contract this year looks to be tens of thousands less. So to not, you know, point out in, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I also wanted to point out that they've even done their share in coming down like that. So I wanted to bring that up when you mentioned that, but obviously the part that is more disposable is shrinking.
I wanted to bring it up and I mentioned, you know, obviously we're fortunate the costs have not gone up, but most people in the public would assume, you know, public safety costs, unless you reduce the level of service, are going to go up every year. But we've been very fortunate with our service providers and in fact, this year, they're trying to help us even further. Mr. Davis, anything you wanted to add on that?
Normally built into our contract with Rural Metro, for example, is a 3% escalator annually. And this year, that organization has agreed to forego that 3% escalator and that translates into about $85,000 that writes you back into the budget as well.
Yeah. But then obviously breaking it out, it just, I think it helped the public when I've spoke with them. It really seems to help illustrate how much, how much of a struggle we have before us. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Jumping back to the service level changes, eliminating certain town programs like the concerts in the park and Oktoberfest. Are we closing the door on the opportunity of having partnerships with outside groups on that, like the Chamber for Oktoberfest, since they did a lot of it last year? Would this mean that if, like they want to do Oktoberfest, we would be charging them for the park rather than making the contribution of letting them use the park for that event? And then maybe in the concerts in the park, if there were some outside sponsors like the movies in the park? Would we have the ability as the town? Brian says yes. Okay. Thank you.
Probably in Brian's chart the other night, or last night, last night? It was last night. There was one column and then there was another, the other was called facilitate, which was the cheaper column.
Don't facilitate is not a limit.
No. That's a good question.
Yeah, that, I, Mayor, council, I think that was a very good question. And it's an opportunity to clarify that if something is excluded from the budget, it only means that, that there's no funding right now in the budget to support that. We certainly will continue to cultivate partnerships to do even more than we delineated in the budget if possible. We'll do as much as we possibly can.
Good.
Mayor, just on that note then, are we having any formal communication with any of those sponsoring organizations to just, you know, to let them know that this is happening?
Councilmember Dickey, members of the council, I really have to say, having networked I really have to say, having met with some of the boards and commissions and other members of the public about stepping up, they've been wonderful. I mean, it's, everybody, I think, is out there recruiting their friends and neighbors to come up with donations to support various town programs. As is part of that, that special revenue fund that we talked about is if these groups are able to bring in funds dedicated to a specific project, that's where that would be accounted for in our budget. And we tend to set aside some money for exactly that purpose.
Thank you.
Excellent. It was also good. I also tried to mention to folks to let them know how their town is funded, the slide prior, just prior to that one, I think. Actually, no, a couple of lack of diversified revenue base. If you can pull that one up. It really gets some people's attention to our town. You know, everybody pays a property tax in Fountain Hills if you own property, but none of it goes to really town operations. It goes to pay some debt down. I'm not sure even what percent of it, so a tenth of a percent of what is paid on property taxes goes to the actual town. But obviously, most of it goes to other agencies outside of the town, schools, sanitary district and others. But to, this slide here illustrates how vulnerable our funding source is to town operations being almost wholly positioned on sales taxes. As the economy goes up and down, our general operating fund is going to go up and down. And of course, when it goes down to the extent it has, then it's a dramatic input, impact. And now, of course, we're looking at the state shared revenues, which make up a considerable portion of our operating budget, being considered perhaps at risk. But we will need to keep an eye on that and keep working with our representatives to ensure they understand how important those are to us since, I think, 80% of all state sales taxes are derived from cities and towns. The portion coming back to us probably from Fountain Hills is probably, we're probably receiving less than what we send in. But we are, in essence, quite lean because of our reliance upon just what people spend here in Fountain Hills. And it also makes, I see Frank Fuara there in the chamber. It's so important that folks, since this is being recorded, understand how important it is for folks to support their local businesses here in Fountain Hills because those revenues stay in Fountain Hills and the dollars that are spent on businesses in Fountain Hills don't just provide sales taxes, but they provide revenue for business owners that live in Fountain Hills that pay their staff. And then those business owners and staff spend their money in Fountain Hills. It's really a compounded benefit. So it's so important for folks to shop locally. Who else had a question or comment? Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you. Is the bed tax not being considered this time?
Mayor, members of the council, the bed tax will come forward to the council in, sorry, the last meeting in June when we bring the resolution forward, but we did include that additional bed tax revenue in, because it's going to be in the general fund. So we did take that into account, assuming that the council would pass that resolution in June.
Thanks.
And Julie, for round process again, at our next meeting on the budget, it'll be laid out once again at the end of this, our last meeting of the month, next Thursday, not this Thursday, but the following Thursday. We'll generally have a similar discussion on all things budget. And then the following meeting will adopt the maximum budgeted amount. So that's really our next target is to ensure that we are dialed in on the maximum amount we might budget. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. The next meeting on May the 20th is an opportunity for the public to come up. Tonight, they can't come up and talk to the council, but the next meeting, the public can come up. They will have had an opportunity to see the budget because it's online, so they can go on there and see it and then come to the council. The next meeting, the first meeting in June, when you adopt the maximum, that's when that maximum is set and we can no longer add anything to the budget without taking things away.
I tell the public not to click print right away because it's 376 pages long. But I do, I think you had some good feedback over the last couple of years from council and from the public as to how to lay out the budget. You guys have addressed, I think, I haven't noticed what's missing, but even the highlighting of the changes is appreciated as well. Now that we're doing this program budgeting, it's obviously easier to compare apples to apples where in that transition year, that was difficult. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, maybe Rick will answer this, or Julie. Could you please explain the role of performance measures in the budget and what, how we assess them and is there follow-up and how are they related to the budget document?
That's kind of a loaded question really because there's two ways of approaching performance measures. There's one, that's kind of an academic approach that tells us, well, this is, just tells us how we're doing and tells us what efficiencies we're realizing and we're not realizing. The other, the other part is it allows us to pinpoint to what degree we are achieving the objectives that the council has laid out for us. And so to the degree that your performance measures are closely tied to and related to your, to your goals and objectives and your mission of your organization, the better you ought to feel about the direction the town is going. It's also the clearest and most transparent way to communicate to the public exactly what we're doing with the dollars that have been entrusted to us.
And the other part of that, Mayor, is the regular assessments or like, how do you incorporate that into your routine, say, periodically?
Performance measures can be used to benchmark our performance against, or I guess you said, against other communities' performance and to identify whether we are falling behind in a particular area, be that in how we are spending funds entrusted to us for road repairs or for parks maintenance or other things like that. It's a kind of a dashboard indicator of how we're doing. As a town, it allows us to quickly make corrections during the year. It allows us to look also, to extrapolate into the future and say, well, you know, this is an area that we need to pay closer attention to or we better prepare for the future because all indications are that this particular service or program is costing more and more and we need to understand not only why, but we need to prepare for those eventualities as well. So the performance measures are a great planning tool for us as well.
Thank you.
Any questions for, I mean, I went through all the ones. I wasn't going to get into the debt service. Any other questions from council? Anything, Rick, from you, related to the budget?
I know, what I, what question? I want to express, of course, right now, and I'll probably do this at the end because there's still a lot more work to be done, my appreciation to all of you who have helped us in formation of this budget. For those of you who may not know, our budget process starts early in the fall. And so it's almost kind of an emotional thing to bring a preliminary budget to the council because so much has gone into this, so many meetings, hours of meetings. I appreciate the executive budget committee, especially those who volunteer their time, Mayor, Audra and others who have been there and helped us so immensely putting this document together. This is a composition, a product of many hands' work and a lot of flexibility this year and a lot of, I think, innovative thought has gone into formulating a budget. I would tell you, if you have a town that has a budget that equals out to zero this year, this year among all other years, a lot of creativity, innovation and flexibility went into creating that budget, no matter what town you're talking about. So I applaud all those who have helped and, you all, of course, have given us the guidance, continue to through this process.
Good. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Rick, and staff. Thank you very much, Audra. Thanks for being there so much as well. And I'll just ask that as we go through this, we know it's going to be difficult. We know we're not all going to be happy, that we just realize and hopefully everyone will be going through it together. And well, if we're all together and we have good constructive, respectful dialogue, we will end up with the best product we can coming out of this at our last meeting in June. So, thank you very much. With that, any other items on the agenda tonight or are we ready to adjourn? We are ready to adjourn. Now, you get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second.
Okay.
Call in favor and it keeps saying aye. Aye. All right. Thank you very much. And the public open house begins in five minutes.